Guys. Good evening and welcome to the October 16th meeting of the Riviera City Council. We'll all rise and salute the flag.
Roll call of the members, Councilor Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Councilor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselsky.
Here.
Here, Councilor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councilor Rizzo. Here, Councilor Sorino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Silvestri. Is absent, Councilor Visconti.
Here.
Here, Councilor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and President Protet Mckenna.
Here.
Here, Quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of September 25th?
So moved.
I would like to do a point of personal privilege, please. On October 7th, the city of Riviera lost Stephen Ferranti, a bright, kind, and beautiful young man. He was my student at Riviera High School for three years and was currently serving as a Riviera firefighter. Stephen will be solely missed. In honor of Stephen, can we please stand and have a moment of silence? Thank you.
Calendar item number three, motion presented by Councilor Zambudo that the Riviera City Council award a certificate of commendation to Philip Imperato in recognition of his 90th birthday.
Councilor Zambudo?
I apologize, it looks like the communication didn't get to Philip Imperato. This is going to go on for a year, I think. We can't wait to do this presentation, but for some reason I thought we etched this in stone on this date, but evidently we didn't, so we'll have to postpone this to another meeting, sorry.
He'll be 100 by the time we get to him.
Next up is the zoning subcommittee report.
Councilor Zambudo.
Thank you, Madam President. There were four items on the zoning subcommittee. The first one was 23164, an ordinance further amending the zoning ordinance of the city Riviera lodging in houses of rooming houses, and that was voted out favorably. So I would ask for a roll call on that.
Order on a second reading. Order on a third and final reading. Roll call for engrossment and ordainment.
Shall the city council approve an ordinance further amending the zoning ordinances of the city of Riviera relative to lodging and rooming houses? Councilor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers. Yes, Councilor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Sorino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Visconti. Is absent, Councilor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and President Protet Mckenna.
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance is engrossed and ordained.
The next item up is 23169, overlook Ridge. Unfortunately, well, fortunately or unfortunately, this was tabled, so this is remaining committee. The third one is 23210, Broadway Capital, 133 Salem Development. That was voted out favorably, I'd ask for a roll call.
Roll call.
Shall the city council grant the relief requested for 133 Salem Street, subject to the conditions of site plan review? Councilor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers. Yes, Councilor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Sorino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Visconti. Is absent, Councilor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and President Protet Mckenna.
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted.
Final item was 23211, and the ward council asked that be tabled because the proponent wasn't here to agree to a deal that was made, so that'll remain in committee. Thank you. I apologize, the agreement with the abbot, not with the ward council. He mitigated, he refereed the agreement, but he wasn't part of it. I apologize for the miscommunication there, counselor, but I'm sure you helped orchestrate it anyway. So anyways, since the proponent wasn't here, it was tabled, and we'll take that up at a later date. And that concludes the zoning subcommittee report, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Communications, calendar item number eight, communication from the city engineer requesting that the city council rename Witten Avenue Extension to Gibson Way pursuant to Section 12.04.020 of the revised ordinances of the city of Riviera.
Order to a public hearing on October 30th.
Calendar item number nine, communication from the election commissioner requesting approval of the warrant for the November 7th, 2023 municipal election.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Madam President, members of the council, Paul Fahey, election commissioner. As is the requirement under state law, I've submitted to you the warrant for the November 7th election. All of the polling places are the same as they were in the preliminary election. All of the offices that are on the ballot are referenced as well. Happy to answer any questions and would ask your approval.
Counselors, any questions? Councilor Rizzo?
Thank you very much, Madam President. I just have one question. I think I'm asking for your help here. Once again, it's been brought to our attention that on Election Day, again, there's, the superintendent of schools has called for a professional development day at the Susan B. Anthony School. As you know, all three precincts for Ward 6 are at the Susan B. Anthony School. So if there's a way you can work with her, I actually have a motion, a late motion, on today's calendar to address it. But, you know, it's unconscionable really that where all three precincts sit in one building, all that parking now is going to be taken, and how does that impact people? Forget just average person parking, what about elderly people that take their responsibility for voting very seriously, and they're going to take all those spaces on them? I think it's disgusting, to be honest with you. So this needs to be addressed. We cannot have that parking lot filled with vehicles and not giving people the opportunity. We vote on two days a year, two days. And, you know, to me, there's no reason in the world why those cars either can't be put somewhere else and they can be bussed if it needs to be in person, or why it can't be held virtually. So.
Madam President, to you, to Counselor Rizzo. The last conversation I had with the school department, I was told that that event was going to be virtual. So I don't know, I know that when they did their event for the preliminary election, their professional development, that instead of having everyone park at Riviera High School, that they had teachers park at the different schools and then bus them in. I don't know the specifics, I can't speak to that. The only thing that I'm thinking, and I will reach out to the superintendent tomorrow, is that since we have moved all three of the precincts to the gymnasium, which I think you know, Counselor, and Councilor Sorino, which are Ward, the street there, that right in front of the school, while it's signed as live parking, it is enforced basically as a short-term parking option for people to vote because 63 used to go into the cafeteria, so that parking was where folks went to 63, which makes perfect sense. I don't disagree that it's an issue, and I'm going to speak to the superintendent, but I think we can probably mitigate it by maybe putting some signage that makes it very clear that you can park on actually either side of that main street. And that puts you right, especially for someone who's disabled or elderly, you know, puts them much, much closer to the actual entrance. So, but this is the first I've heard of this, I'll be completely honest. And I will look into it, and we did well, I think, in resolving it the last time, and I'm hopeful we can do that again. But it was my understanding that the event was going to be virtual. So I don't know if this is just for the teachers at that location, or if it's citywide.
I just wanted to correct the record too, because that cabinet last week, the superintendent did mention that it's going to be a virtual PD session, so the only people that would be present would be secretaries, custodians, and admins.
Then accept my apologies, because, you know, I just wanted to be sure for the residents of Ward 6 that they don't get caught up in the same thing that happened the last time.
Counselor, I'm glad we have clarity now, so there was no confusion. That was kind of my thought, because of what I had been told, but thank you, Tom, for clarifying that.
Okay, as long as we know with certainty, I'll withdraw my motion, in fact, on that. If we know for sure that it's going to be a virtual meeting, but, you know, the last time, you know, notwithstanding some of the efforts that you guys did to try to make it workable, you know, there was still a lot of problems, I heard from a lot of residents. And in fact, I think if we can, just one last thing, Madam President, if we could, and you are 100% right, you know, I know the police officers don't enforce that live parking along the Susan B. Anthony School on Election Day, but maybe we should actually have, if we can, put some signage out or something, that, you know, parking on Sargent Street alongside, you know, Susan B., however that would be worded, so that people would know enough maybe not to go down, because it's hard enough as it is to have to park down there for a lot of people and then come up the hill and into the gymnasium. So if there's a way that you can possibly make it easier for people to understand that they can just pull up and park, you know, ignore the live parking signage and so on and so forth, I think that would go a long way.
I will do that, Counselor, I suspect that it's a practice that people have been doing. I say that with some humor, because I noticed that a lot of people do park there, and, but agreed. Well, what we had thought was just putting the current live parking signs just for that day, putting up temporary signs saying, you know, 15-minute parking, short-term parking for elections, something like that. But I do think that parking, I was there numerous times during the day, as I'm sure you were, that parking spaces, those parking spaces are being pretty well utilized, which is good, because it's convenient to that doorway.
Sure, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Madam President. It was truly unconscionable on preliminary day to have the professional development thing at the high school. That was disgusting. Yeah, I know, they tried to mitigate it by bussing people. There's no reason, Counselor Rizzo said it's two days a year. For God's sakes, can we find a way not to have these professional development days on that election day? I think we can. I'm glad this one's virtual, but really, we shouldn't have to be talking about this, if, you know, if we're being reasonable. One day a year, let's be realistic. And I have a question for you, which I get asked all the time, and I know you gave me the paperwork that tells me when the last day to register the vote for November election is, but can you please announce it to the public?
Sure, so a couple of deadlines coming up for the November 7th election. The last day in time to register to vote is a week from Saturday, which is October 28th. I know at the last meeting we discussed early voting, that will start this coming Saturday. So this coming Saturday, early voting in this chamber from 10:00 to 2:00 on Saturday, 10:00 to 2:00 on Sunday, next, the following week, Monday through Thursday, normal city hall hours in this chamber. We do leave the chamber when you all, and when other boards have meetings, and then we just have folks vote downstairs in our office. But a week from Saturday is our, what we call our long day. We'll have early voting from 10:00 to 2:00, but our office will be open from 8:00 to 5:00, and that is the last day to register to vote, 5:00 PM on October 28th.
5:00 PM.
If the council would allow, just a couple of other deadlines. If people want to request an absentee or vote-by-mail ballot, by mail, we need to receive that application by close of business on Tuesday, October 31st, Halloween, because we need time to turn it around. If someone wants to apply to vote by mail or absentee vote in person, and most likely we would be an absentee vote at that point, it would be the day before the election, which is Monday, November 6th, at noon in our office.
Great, thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor. Your Counselor, Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Madam President. I just, I'm having some trouble believing that this isn't at the Susan B. Anthony School and that it's virtual. I would like something in writing from the superintendent that states that it's a virtual event, because this email clearly states that the training is going to be breakfast 7:30 to 7:50. How are they going to have breakfast virtually? So lunch, 11:00 to 11:20. See what I'm saying, see where I'm going with this? So I want something in writing if this is virtual, because this says, again, that, and if you still want to withdraw your motion, Counselor Rizzo, okay, good. So I, you know, and I agree with you. I put up with this with my ward last time, and Mr. Fahey, this has nothing to do with you. I know that you are at the will of the school department in being allowed to use them as poll locations. This has nothing to do with you, you do a fantastic job. But this is an election day, this is a very important election, and people need as much access as possible to these polling locations. They did it in Ward 3, now they're going to do it in Ward 6, it's a disgrace. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? All in favor, all opposed, so ordered. Thank you, Paul.
Calendar item number 10, communication from the city planner requesting amendments to the revised ordinances of the city of Riviera, establishing regulations for outdoor dining and various amendments concerning pre-qualified lots, signage, and driveways.
Order to a public hearing on October 30th.
Calendar item number 11, communication from the city auditor requesting an appropriation from the Community Improvement Trust Fund for radar signage and illuminated stop signs in Ward 5.
Any counselors?
Yes, Madam President.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
This is something that I requested, and basically, there are streets down there, I'll name a couple. Mills Avenue, the Sagamore Street in my area, and Rice Avenue. And speeding down there is horrific. The first, Rice Avenue and Mills Avenue are right across from two public beaches. Beaches, whether they're public or not, that's another question. But they're across from two beaches, there are kids that coming in, they're all some along, and adults. I just don't want to see anybody get hurt down there. And I'm asking for this for that particular reason.
Thank you, Counselor Powers. Any other counselors? Roll call.
Shall the city council approve an appropriation from the Community Improvement Trust Fund to the Ward 5 traffic control account in the amount of $45,000? Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Sorino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and President Protet Mckenna.
Yes.
Yes, the appropriation has been approved. Calendar item number 12, communication from the acting mayor requesting an appropriation from the Community Improvement Trust Fund to support the improved landscaping of Burbank Street in the Dale Vane Street triangle.
Any counselors?
Madam President.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky.
If I may, you know, I don't have a problem with this, I'm just curious, if Christopher Skay can come up. I remember several months ago, we were supposed to get a listing of how much money from the CIT money was per ward, and I have not seen that, and I don't know if all this is really coming out of those wards, so if.
Yes, you are right, I did promise you that, I will get that to you. We have the auditors in right now, we're doing our fiscal year '23 audit. Once that's, I verify that, I'll give you the breakdown by ward on that. But for this appropriation, there is $910,000 in that CIT fund. That's cumulative, though I'll break it up per ward for you, absolutely right. Thank you for the reminder.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Thank you, Mr. Viskey. Roll call.
Shall the city council approve an appropriation from the Community Improvement Trust Fund to the Ward 4 landscaping account in the amount of $15,250? Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Sorino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and President Protet Mckenna.
Yes.
Yes, the appropriation has been approved. Calendar item number 13, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro that the acting mayor direct the chief of police to again increase patrols on East Mountain Avenue. Speeding has not stopped, and there has been an increase of motorbikes and motor scooters in the area as well.
Counselor Cogliandro.
Speaks for itself.
All in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Calendar item number 14, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro that the acting mayor direct the DPW to install a speed table on East Mountain Ave. To combat the speeding issues.
Counselor Cogliandro.
Speaks for itself.
All in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Calendar item number 15, motion presented by Counselor Visconti pursuant to Section 12.04.020, street names, the revised ordinances of the city of Riviera, that the city council hold a public hearing for the purpose of changing the name of Unity Ave to Prevey's Way.
Counselor Visconti.
Thank you, Madam President. The Prevey name has been a staple in the Beauchamp community for quite some time. I remember actually working for old man Prevey, God rest his soul, back when I was probably about 13, not legal to work back in the day, and underage. But it's a great family. He has been, like I said, a staple in that area, and I think it would serve the city. It would be like a thank you for all his years of business in the city, and I hope my colleagues would agree and move this forward, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr., Counselor Visconti. Any other counselors? I would like to say this is a great motion. Order to a public hearing on October 30th.
Calendar item number 16, motion presented by Counselor Cogliandro that the acting mayor and a representative from Cataldo Ambulance appear before the city council to discuss the issues in regards with providing adequate ambulance services to the city of Riviera.
Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Madam President. First and foremost, I would like to say that this is in no way, shape, or form to say that the people who work for ambulance companies and save lives every day are doing a bad job. This was prompted when a 10-year-old boy at the Paul Riviera School experienced a head injury, and the SRO had to drive him to the hospital because there were no ambulances available. And I know we've had our share of issues with having ambulances arrive on time and, you know, covering and whatever they need to do. I would just like someone to come up here, kind of give us a rundown of what's going on, if there's any updates on the future of hiring more people, or whatever we need to do to get the proper ambulance service of the city, because at the end of the day, we all know that we need more, and we can't have what happened to that little boy happen again. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Madam President. Counselor Cogliandro, this is an amazing motion, I can't agree with you more. I actually was witness on Malden Street last week. A gentleman fell in his home, the fire department was there immediately, and it was 18 minutes later before Cataldo Ambulance got there. That's unacceptable, that's someone's life, and we need to fix that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you, Madam President. This is an excellent motion on behalf of Counselor Cogliandro. This is something I've heard across the city now for months. I think a lot of it has to do with not keeping up with the demand of our increased population, and the services just aren't there the way they used to be. It's just common sense, the more people you have, you need to increase your services to coincide with that. And I actually had a meeting with the ambulance service that serves a couple of surrounding communities around us, who are complaining that they're spending way too much time in mutual aid, helping our community, having the communities that they're contracted with upset with them. So this needs to be corrected, one way or the other. We can't have our own residents, you know, in time of need have to have these long wait times. I mean, thank God, you know, that poor little 10-year-old kid didn't have anything more traumatizing or more serious that could have really led to a real issue, and thank God again for the SRO that was able to take him to the hospital. But this needs to be addressed. These are, you know, obviously, they're life and death issues when it comes to ambulance service. Nobody calls an ambulance for something that isn't quite serious. So I think it's an excellent motion, I want to congratulate Counselor Cogliandro for bringing it forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Madam President. I think it's an excellent motion. There are many times I'm told that when someone calls for medical aid, the fire department, to their credit, shows up first, and sometimes the ambulance is delayed for some reason getting there. The fire department is doing their job, I think the ambulance service has to be adjusted. And I'd also like to look into the possibility when Engine 5, the station is, well, Engine 2, actually, will be completed, that we look into maybe using that third bay for an ambulance service down in the Point of Pines and the Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Powers. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Madam President. I think this is a great motion, and there certainly is a problem. And I have to say, I think a lot of the problem stems from COVID. People have not come back to work. It's very hard to get drivers, it's very hard to get EMTs. It's the same thing in every business. We have to address this with Cataldo and help them in any way we can to get people to support, because you can't have ambulances if you don't have drivers. So it's a big problem, and we probably can help in recruiting people for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. All in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Calendar item number 17, motion presented by counselors Rizzo, Sorino, and President Protet Mckenna that the city clerk invite representatives from both Massport and the MBTA to appear before the city council at the earliest convenience to discuss the agency's plans for utilizing spaces at the MBTA Wonderland Garage for Logan Airport employee parking. There is concern among airport employees and local officials alike about this proposal, and it would be helpful to receive a briefing from agencies to learn more about this plan.
I'm going to start with Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Madam President. This is actually a problem that's been brought to our attention by a couple of employees working for the airlines. And, you know, but for them bringing it forward to us, we really would have no idea. Apparently, there's always been adequate parking in Chelsea, and there's never been a problem now, apparently because of the expansion, and I guess some alternate use for the property where they park in Chelsea, they're forcing a lot of these employees now to potentially be parking at Wonderland Train Station, and I guess some other alternative areas that's going to really be an inconvenience for them. And so, you know, we would obviously like these agencies that are responsible for making this change to come up and let us know what's going on, especially as it impacts not just these employees for the airlines, but, you know, these facilities that sit in our community that are now going to be utilized, taking yet further parking away from others. So, you know, hopefully we'll get these agencies to come and appear and explain to us what exactly is going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Counselor Sorino.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say ditto to what Counselor Rizzo said. We actually have a resident in the audience, if she would like to speak. She's the one who brought it to our attention, Ms. Atwood, who works for the airlines. But if I just might before, I yield to Ms. Atwood. For us, I think as a body, this is a two-pronged issue. The first, with residents who work for the airport and who are now going to be forced to park in a different spot, which Ms. Atwood will speak to. And then also, the taking of parking spaces from the garage where commuters, not just from Riviera, but from the entire North Shore Park during working hours. I know before COVID, if, I would park there before COVID, and if you weren't there by 8:30, quarter of 9, you were up on the sixth and seventh floor of the Wonderland Garage. So I don't know with COVID, and now that, you know, people are in a more hybrid work model, maybe the MBTA feels that this, you know, this is appropriate. However, I think they need to explain that to us, to show us that. And, you know, especially too, with snowstorms, with the winter coming, Riviera residents have always had preferential preference to park in that garage to get their cars off the street. So now with more vehicles from Logan Airport employees, how will that impact as well? So with that, Madam President, I would yield and ask you to recognize Ms. Atwood. Thank you.
State your name and your address, please.
Jill Atwood, 21, Joey Road. I found out about this right before the middle of September. I was riding the employee bus back. There was a United Flight attendant who asked me, I work for American. We are told that it is not just American. By December, or the end of December, 1,250 people who park in Chelsea are now going to be forced to park in Wonderland. 1,250. Wonderland has been guaranteed 500 spaces. That is what we are told. We are told that there's going to be an overflow lot, or if we don't fit in the garage, we go to an overflow lot, which I'm guessing is the lot that's on North Shore Row by the nightclub, but we don't really have any information about that. Masport keeps pushing the fact that there are 500 dedicated spaces in the Wonderland Parking Garage. So, I don't know if that means we're going to have spaces that we park in, and if your car 501, do you go to another space in the lot? I have learned that we will be provided a monthly Charlie card pass, so that will not come out of our pocket. Masport has also said that it will not affect the snow emergency people from parking in there. I have spoken to Senator Janino's office. She put me in touch with somebody from Masport. I have concerns about parking in public lot and leaving my car there for more than one day. As a flight attendant, I can be gone for one day, or I can be gone up to three. I will also be in my uniform, which I feel puts a target on my back and my car. I'm also going to be pulling my rollboard suitcase with my tote. I then have to park in Wonderland, go get on the train, which if I miss it, I'm waiting for 10 minutes, I take it four stops, and I have to get off the train with my luggage, get on the bus, which also, I believe, stops at the rental car place before it goes to the terminal. Those buses, if you haven't seen them, are jam-packed. As an employee, I don't even really know how I allow time for check-in. I personally do a lot of early morning check-ins. We are told that there is going to be a bus that will provide service while the T is not running. It's supposed to run every eight to 10 minutes. We are supposed to pick it up, I guess, where the buses go in Wonderland. Obviously, if it's going to run every eight to 10 minutes while the T's not running, that's more than one bus. I'm really not sure how they're going to do that, because we do have a bus, we had a bus problem. We now have Yankee Bus Line instead of Paul Revere that brings us from Chelsea, you know, to the airport. Like I said, our union is fighting this. I don't feel that this is Masport providing adequate parking for employees. I should not be forced to park in Wonderland and take public transportation to get to work. Now, we do have flight attendants that do it. Most of those flight attendants don't have a car. As I stated, I have a real problem leaving my car in Wonderland overnight. We also know that in that area, I mean, there is an increasing gang presence. I'm going to have my uniform on. Now, I park in Wonderland every Marathon Monday when I go to volunteer at the Boston Marathon. The difference is I'm dressed like everybody else that parks in the parking garage. I'm dressed like I'm going to the baseball game, or I'm dressed like I'm going to watch the marathon. If I have to park there for work, I'm dressed in my uniform. I also, as a Revere resident, an additional 500 cars coming into Revere every day? That's going to be nuts. And I did learn when I called the mayor's office to inquire about this, I was told when I met, they transferred me to the city solicitor, and I spoke with him. And I'm sure that none of you are aware, Masport actually came, or had a conversation with the mayor's office before the Sumner Tunnel was going to close, because they wanted to use the part of Wonderland that the city owns. And they wanted to use it because they were concerned about parking while the Sumner Tunnel was closed. It's my understanding that the city said if you wanted to use their plot, that there were certain conditions that had to be met. And Masport never got back to the city, so they thought it was a dead issue until I called his office. And then he pretty much said, "Well, they haven't come back to us. I don't believe that this is happening." And I was like, "Well, I can tell you, 1,250 people are being booted out of Chelsea and put in Wonderland, and this is happening by the end of the year." Now, I understand that the MBTA lot is owned by the MBTA, and they can do pretty much what they want with it, but I also do think that, as a city, there are concerns. And I think, as Masport should have given you a common courtesy, that this was happening. And like I said, I still don't really know what happens if I get there and I'm car 501. Does that mean I park in another part of the parking garage? Because, as you know, it has the pay-by-phone app. So if Masport's paying for that, how does that exactly work when they scan my plate? Is there going to be something that says, "Oh, she's an airline employee"? We really don't know. Like I said, this is affecting all airlines. I know that United, their flight attendant union, is fighting it. I know that our union is having conversations with the company. So far, we're told that this is happening. So I'm hoping that maybe we can put some pressure on Masport, and maybe the city can help voice their concerns, and maybe we can stop this from happening. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Counselor Sylvesteri.
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Atwood, thank you very much for coming up and giving us this information. I think that we need to address this with MBTA and Masport immediately. Yes, they can make an agreement for 500 spaces in the parking lot, but where is that overflow parking going? You know, it's tough when state agencies speak out of both sides of their mouth. They're asking residents to ditch the drive, take the train, but now they're going to take the spots that they park at to take that train. So what's it going to do? Force more people onto the road? It's just a backward cycle of a message that just ain't making sense, and I think they need to come clarify that message here with us before they make any bigger disaster in the City of Revere.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Permission to speak from the chair. I've gotten a lot of calls from this. I just, it's another blunder that the City of Revere is going to get. I just, I think it's ridiculous. What happens in the wintertime, you know, when we have the emergency and everybody, all the residents that we can't park on the streets, we have to park in the MBTA parking lot of Wonderland? What happens then? What happens when there's an overflow, and the people have to go across the street, and it's the wintertime, and you have to clean off your cars? What happens then? I really don't think that we should, we should put this in a committee, and we should talk about it, and we should have the representatives come up. And, I mean, how dare they not tell us? Now, here it is again. We don't know that this is happening. We're just finding it out from residents. It's ridiculous. So, I would say we have to put it in a committee. Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Madam President. I agree with what you said. I also completely agree with Counselor Sylvesteri as well. I feel like Revere gets no respect.
No.
We get none. And this is another, you know, just another variable of that. The traffic point, the snow, I mean, why haven't, if they came to us about this, I feel like we should have been made aware of it. We shouldn't have to be finding out from residents. And I, again, appreciate you coming up here, but when is this city going to get respect from state agencies like that? Thank you.
So I'm asking the council, what committee should I put it in? Legislative Affairs? Committee of the Hall. So this is going into the Committee of the Hall. Thank you, Ms. Atwood.
Calendar item number 18, motion presented by Counselor Serino that the acting mayor provide the City Council with an update on the status of the yet-to-be-opened Health and Wellness Center, and a full accounting of how much the city has spent on this project to date, including the sources of said funding, such as ARPA or General Fund. It has been approximately six months since the City Council was given an update on this project, at which point, the council was told a late summer opening was envisioned.
Counselor Serino.
Speaks for itself.
All in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Calendar item number 19, motion presented by Counselor Serino and Cogliandro that the duly-elected mayor upon November's election convene in the new year a planning committee for a Columbus Day Italian-American Heritage Month Parade to be held on the second Monday of October of '25, and every two years thereafter, as had been a tradition in Revere for generations.
I'm going to start with Counselor Serino first.
Thank you, Madam President. So I placed in here Columbus Day slash Italian-American Heritage Month Parade, because, to be honest, I'm at the point where I really don't care what it's called, except that we have a parade again in the city. So, we've talked about this before. We talked about it last October, last November, and the memories that many of us have growing up in Revere, it's just that that parade was a special day for the community to all be together. So no matter what we call it, I think we should be having a parade at that time. It's just been a tradition in our community, and we should continue it. So I don't know what happened. I know with the transition, it might have, you know, you need a good nine to 12 months to plan a parade, so I don't know if that's why our motion, or more correctly, Counselor Cogliandro's motion last year kind of fell to the wayside. But I would hope that whoever the next mayor might be, that they take that seriously. And, again, it doesn't matter what it's called, just that we have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Madam President. I mean, Counselor Serino really said it all. I know that some adjacent communities have their city unity parades. I believe East Boston and Chelsea do it every other year. I don't care, again, what we call it. It's just a day to get everybody in the city together and to celebrate us as a community. And I think that's all we're asking for, and I would love to set up a committee so that it doesn't take two years to set this up. I have a hard time understanding why it takes so long, but, you know, I would love to do it every year.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Madam President. I think this is a great motion, but I disagree with my colleague. It's got to be Columbus Day, and he is correct. He is correct. This was a tradition in Revere, and everybody enjoyed it. And you didn't have to be Italian to enjoy it. Everybody in the city enjoyed it. The kids loved it. We had the best bands. We, you know, it's got to be brought back, and it really is a Revere tradition, and I want it called Columbus Day. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam President. So, this parade had gone on, as Counselor Serino had said, for years and years and years, and then somewhere, I don't know when it was, around 2008, 2009, the parade just stopped. We didn't, we no longer celebrated the Columbus Day Parade anymore, and, you know, there was a void there. So, I remember when I took over as mayor in 2012, one of the first things I did is, as Counselor Serino and Cogliandro's motion indicates, I put together a planning committee. And for those who might remember him, Buddy Mangino from East Boston, he was an enormous help to me and our community in reigniting the Columbus Day Parade, and we added a little twist to it. We had a Columbus Day breakfast that turned into a roast sort of thing, and it was a lot of fun. Everybody really enjoyed it. And I think the crux of what everybody's saying here, whether it's the Columbus Day Parade, whether it's the Community Pride Day, whatever, whatever we want to call it, you know, I think any type of a parade builds community spirit. You know, there's that old saying, "Everybody loves a parade." It's true. You know, when you see people lining up, up and down the parade route, and you've got marching bands, and all the kids that are participating, and floats, and all that stuff, it is a real uplifting event, and it's a true community event that we can all celebrate. So, I wholeheartedly agree with this motion. I would like to, once again, get it reinvigorated and, you know, bring back some sort of a parade here so that the people of our community can have that type of enjoyment. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Visconti.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say thank you to my colleagues for bringing this motion forward. I couldn't agree more that it is a great motion. It should be brought back, and hopefully, whoever the next mayor is, will do just that. And I look forward to that next parade when it comes, when it comes around. So, thank you again to my colleagues for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Counselor. All in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Calendar item number 20, motion presented by Counselor Serino and Counselor Novoseltsky that the City Council adopt the attached resolution recognizing the State of Israel following the terrorist attack committed by Hamas on October 7, '23.
Counselor Serino.
Madam President, I would actually yield to Counselor Novoseltsky. I think this is a bit more personal to him. I just think, you know, we should be standing, taking a stand on this. Thank you, Madam President.
Counselors Novoseltsky.
Thank you, Madam President. On this date, October 7, 2023, was a day of America's 9/11. Total surprise attack, unwarranted by a group of terrorists that everybody knows about, and totally unexpected. Many lives were lost. Israeli, Palestinian, Americans, French, Italian, Germans. It was almost another Holocaust. Disgusting, to say the least. Now, Israel has been holding back on their attack, hoping that people can get out of the way. They're trying to tell them, "Please leave the area, because we're going to be blowing the whole area up, and we don't want you to get hurt." Now, the UN has allowed some kind of humanitarian supplies in. How they're going to get to most of the people, we don't know. But most of the area that's involved is northern Gaza, from the river up to Lebanon, and surrounded by Israel and the Mediterranean Sea. Our hearts are with everybody that we lost, everybody that's injured, and I don't want anybody to think that it's any particular group's fault other than Hamas. We have the Jews, the Israelis, we got the Palestinians that live there. They are as equal as the Israelis that live there. The same thing with every other group that lives there. My heart is broken, as you can see and hear. I brought my flag. I wear my pins. I wear my tie. I have a memorial light that I light in my house for all those that we lost since the first day. So I thank Counselor Serino for helping me with this. Everything is totally scary, to say the least, for everybody, even us. We don't know who's going to come into that door here and do it to us, or to our churches, or to our synagogues, or temples. Very scary. So, I hope that the City Council recognizes this resolution. And I would just like to add a last line, that we have the acting mayor fly the Israeli flag in front of City Hall until the resolution is made on this matter. So I thank you for your time, your thoughts, your memories, and your sympathies. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Madam President. This terrorist attack was on innocent civilians. This was not, this was not a...
This was not, this was not a, an attack on military or anything of the sort. The atrocities were unbelievable, and what the news media is not saying is that this was worse than, by percentage, was worse than our 9/11. The amount of people that were killed in this attack, if you did the percentage wise, it was like four or five 9/11s to Israel. So it's horrific what they did to babies, women, and children. Completely inhumane, there's no comparison, there's no trying to justify anything, and there's no relevance to some of the rhetoric that's coming out of the colleges, and I'm disgusted with the academics and the teachings of the colleges that are giving Hamas the equivalent of the Israelis. It's disgusting, and I for one won't stand for it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Madam President. Counselor Serino, Novoseltsky, I commend you for making this motion. That was a horrible, horrible day, and Counselor Novoseltsky, I commend you for making it clear that this isn't an Israel-Palestine issue. This is a Hamas terrorist group that was responsible for this, and that's who must pay for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Silvestri. Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you very much. Obviously, my condolences to our residents who may have ties to family members in Israel. It was a horrible, horrible event, and just to follow up on what Counselor Zambudo said in terms of the multiples, I, my brother-in-law is from Israel and has family back there. In fact, one of them has been called to fight at this point, but the way he was explaining it to me was, you know, if you, if you took our country of 350 million people and juxtaposed that to Israel, a country of 7 million people, that would be the equivalent of about 35,000 people that would have been killed in one attack in our country. So it is absolutely devastating, and, you know, there's not, there's not much more you can say other than just offer our prayers and condolences to the, you know, to the victims that had to survive here. My brother-in-law had said to me, in a country that size, there's not many people that don't know or are somehow affiliated with somebody that was killed in the attack. So it's, it's that grave and it's that serious. So again, condolences to those of you that were impacted and affected, and I hope there is a resolution sooner than later. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? All in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Do you want to write it to the record?
A resolution expressing Revere City Council's support for the state of Israel, whereas the Revere City Council in the city of Revere, Massachusetts recognizes the right of the state of Israel to exist as a sovereign and independent nation with the full rights and privileges afforded to all sovereign nations. And whereas on October 7, '23, the Palestinian terrorist group Hamas launched an unprecedented attack on the state of Israel, which included firing over 2,500 rockets into the nation and resulted in hundreds of Israelis being murdered, with the death toll expected to rise, making this one of the deadliest attacks on Jewish people since the Holocaust. And whereas the timing of this Hamas attack to coincide with the observance, observance of the Jewish Sabbath in celebration of the Sukkot holiday demonstrates the intent to maximize civilian casualties. And whereas the Revere City Council stands firmly in solidarity, solidarity with the state of Israel in its efforts to safeguard its citizens, protect its borders, and ensure the safety and security of its people, now therefore be it resolved that the Revere City Council condemns this unprovoked attack by Hamas against Israel and its citizens, and supports Israel's right to defend itself and protect its citizens from indiscriminate violence and terrorism. And be it further resolved that the Revere City Council conveys its heartfelt condolences to all Israeli victims, as well as their families and communities, especially to the Israeli, American, and Jewish populations of the city of Revere. And be it further resolved that the Israeli flag be flown at City Hall in unwavering support of the state of Israel. And be it further resolved that the Revere City Council encourages all other municipalities in the Commonwealth to likewise condemn Hamas, as well as any official body that refuses to recognize Israel's right to act decisively in self-defense to protected citizens. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be transmitted to the governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the consulate general of Israel to New England.
Thank you. Madam President, can I have a point of personal privilege, please?
State your point, Counselor.
You know, a lot of things happen on the internet, and I didn't want to bring this up as part of this, but if anybody has seen it on the internet, there was articles sent out by many superintendent of schools about the learning websites. And one of these learning websites that not only Revere users, but many other schools districts use, they found a anti-Semitic site that accused Israel of being the terrorists, which of course we know is incorrect. But I was very disappointed of a national news this was brought up, and Revere was one of the districts that was mentioned. Allegedly, it wasn't our superintendent did it, that it may have been one of the reporters, but it was put out by the superintendent about what happened to the, you know, father teachers and the kids to learn, and they found this particular anti-Semitic website. Now, the superintendent babbled some words of understand, trying to get us to understand how, what she did, which is kind of fine, but you would think, once she knew that this was an anti-Semitic site and Revere was part of this information, that there would have been an apology put out, a public apology, which I'm totally devastated and disappointed that Revere didn't take a stand and say, and really explain in public that there's an apology due. Now, she already said that she wouldn't apologize, which is disgusting, and I think she ought to be put on the carpet by the Revere School Committee to make her understand this is not a simple thing with the internet, and that, yes, things happen, but at least admit it. Give her a little sympathy, but no, we didn't get that from our superintendent. And I heard from people all over the country what's going on in Revere, from California to Montana, to Florida, to Texas. People were calling me, what's going on? I lived in Revere, I was brought up in Revere, and I see this coming out of the city of Revere. I can't believe it. And I think it's, that I'm making my point, the superintendent should step up, be a real person, and have a little sympathy for the lives lost on both sides. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. All in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Madam President.
Yes.
Can I, I would like to offer a motion to stand in solidarity with Israel following the terrorist attack by lighting up the Marquee Bridge, white and blue.
Very good, Counselor.
Think we need a second? No?
No.
Do we need a second for offering? No? All set.
Thank you, Counselor Morabito. All in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Calendar item number 21, motion presented by Counselor Silvestri that the acting mayor request the chief of police to conduct traffic enforcement on Wentworth Street as a matter of public safety. Drivers do not obey the Do Not Enter signage.
Counselor Silvestri.
Motion speaks for himself. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. All in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Calendar item number 22, motion presented by Counselor Silvestri that the acting mayor request the chief of Health and Human Services to appear before the city council to provide an update on the overdose outreach program.
Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Madam President. Unfortunately, the U.S. has hit another all-time record with 112,000 overdose deaths in this past year. Massachusetts is up over 200, 2,000 overdose deaths. And with the, the loss of an integral piece of the SUDHI office, I'd like the head of Health and Human Services to come before us, let us know what we're doing to rebuild that office. At one point, that office was recognized by the President of the United States for its work, and I think we need to get back there for the situation that we're in. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Any other counselors? All in favor, all opposed, so ordered.
Late motion presented by Counselor Rizzo that the acting mayor instruct the superintendent of public schools to present an alternative plan for the school's professional development day, being held once again on Election Day, Tuesday, November 7, at the Susan B. Anthony School. These professional development days can and should be held via Zoom or other virtual connection for the benefit of the voters, who in many cases are older and/or disabled.
Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you, Madam President. Paul Fahy, as we know, was up here earlier, and he, in conjunction with Tom Sikorski, was letting us know that they believed that the professional development day was going to be virtual, but I would like to keep this motion and hopefully pass this motion because I want to hear it directly from the superintendent personally to the city council that she is not going to interfere with the election like happened back on September 19. So I'd like to, I'd like to have the support of my colleagues, and I'll let any other, any other counselor speak on it as they, as they'd like. Thank you.
Counselor Cogliandro.
Thank you. We just received an email from the superintendent. It says custodians, administrators, secretaries, and a handful of other employees will be at work. Some teachers will elect to work from their classrooms. Some secretaries and parent liaisons, 35 people, have a training at West Revere for part of the day and will park on the side of the building that is not near voting in the circle in the side of the park, D.K. That's word for word.
Is that okay with you, Ms. Counselor?
Well, so much for virtual. I don't, okay, I guess, I mean, if that's the best that can happen.
You have 800 teachers that attend those meetings, those conferences, so.
I still, I'm sorry, if I still have the floor, I apologize. I just, I just still don't see the, the need for it to be that day. It doesn't, why does it have to be on Election Day? And I hate to keep harping on this, and I appreciate the email from the superintendent so quickly, but why do we have to, I just don't understand. I mean, how many people, I'd ask for a show of hands, but we'd all raise our hands, how many people pulled into a parking lot where people, the lot was completely full at a voting location, and they either didn't pull in, or they pulled in and just turned around and said, I'll come back later? We can't have that. I don't care if it's 10 people, 35 people, 800 people, it's Election Day, it should just be for that. Thank you.
Yes, I, if I could, if I may, Madam President, I agree, you know, when I heard, when I, you know, as, as Counselor Cogliandro read the email, like, why do we have to, why, why does anybody have to be coming in that day other than maybe a couple of custodians? I mean, what is the reason? What is the urgency when she knows that thousands of people are going to be showing up? You know, I, I mean, it just, you know, it just, it just makes no sense. It's unnecessary, you know, there's, there's no good reason for it, and it's been said before, one or two days a year, but yet you still can't get the cooperation. It's unbelievable. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. There's no further business. Thank you for your participation in tonight's meeting. The city council will stand adjourned until October 30. Please have a safe week. Thank you.